They have a local authority in the state. They're not just, they don't just get anybody.
It's the side.
Right?
It's a good town, it's fine. Yes.
So actually, what they could do. To the village board of trustees. And then the board of trustees would then answer for it. For something. I sort of.
You'll talk about the term of life.
With the board of trustees.
Well, I hope that's my job. Sit down.
I guess on my list of local, there's one to adopt.
Jake told me that we told him we have at least five that we can. I want to give some examples.
So if it's just a recommendation, for the town, the village board should give this all secret. If they're actually creating. It's an unwisked action. They can issue a declaration. That goes to the town. At this point, we don't see a resolution or a motion to make this kind of a recommendation to the village.
So brother.
They're looking at it.
The planning review is this, this is the nicest file. All right. We're not, we're not, we're not.
We're not ready to bring up that. We can bring up the whole.
Right. The notations and stuff.
Right. That'll be Tuesday.
Yeah, he knows what's going on.
You know. Yep, yeah, this will be quite new.
Okay, you want to turn the mic off? Okay. I would like to call this meeting of the combined works of village and planning and zoning board meeting order. First order of business actually is, I mean, entertain the motion from one of the board members to allow me to sit as the acting chair, since our regular chair is incapacitated at the moment, and I am sitting in his chair keeping it warm for him.
I'll make that motion that Chris Gray, so the.
Actually, until you appoint Larry as a voting member, somebody else will have to make the motion.
All right, Bill makes the motion.
I'll second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, well, both? Okay, all right. Second order of business now, entertain the motion to have Larry Hall sitting in on the board as a voting member this evening.
Is there a required motion?
We've done it by motion before, yeah.
Then I'll make that motion.
Okay, motion is second, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
In the opposition?
Next.
Okay. All right, so, moving on, we have one item of business in front of the board this evening, but before we get into that, if the board members would take a few minutes to review the minutes from our last meeting, which goes all the way back to September, so please review those quickly, if anyone has any changes, notices are, make sure everything is copacetic, accept them, and then get them into the public records, I'll take care of the business from that end, and then we can move on to the task at hand.
I'll make a motion to approve the zoning board of appeals minutes for September 2nd, 2021, as written.
Second?
I'm second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Go. In your capable hands now. All right, so we have in front of us the seating, one item of business, scheduled matter is a site plan review and approval, but actually, we are not going to approve a site plan. Our lawyer has brought up a very interesting conundrum here, in the fact that there is actually no local village law or ordinance which says that we have the capability to approve a site plan, but we will make a positive or negative recommendation to the village board to accept or deny a site plan. So, the site plan will be reviewed this evening, and it is 11 Orchard Street, Works of New York, to construct a warehouse, loading dock, driveway, and associated parking pursuant to the G.I. Village Code, Section 817524, tax ID 0806-12022, property zone G.I. General Industrial. And we have Greg McMahon, let's see, that I remember you from years ago, who's going to give us a little dissertation on what the plan is.
All right, again, my name is Greg McMahon with McMahon and Maru. The plan, as you noted, is at 11 Orchard Street. It's a warehouse building just under 12,000 square feet, with, I think we've got eight parking spots, driveway entrance off of Orchard, and a turn here to allow the tractor trailers to pull in, back in and unload and pull back out. The majority of the site will remain green space, there'll be a sanitary sewer connection, a water service connection for the building, and it's got, you know, a broad brush covers a majority of the work that's being proposed. I guess we'll, at this point, we can answer any questions you might have.
Okay? Underground gas connection, I assume?
Gas and electric, yeah, that will be handled directly between the builder and our G and E, but as those utilities are available, gas and electric will be underground.
I noticed in the package you gave us, you gave us a, I don't know, a view, or someone gave us a rendering of the proposed structure itself?
Yes, that was provided by the owners.
Okay, just want to make a couple notations here, this rendering does not reflect the actual construction of the building, they state on your plan that the, there will be a raised loading dock area, this shows it as flush to grade, so there will be, they showed a man door into the loading dock area at grade level, so obviously.
That's not right.
I see on your plan, we've got a little square in a corner, I assume that's steps?
That's, that's, they go up to it, our understanding is it's going to be capable of, you know, a truck can back in there, and load and unload, so the door's up somewhere in the four-foot range, which is a typical height for looking down.
And just as one point of order, you keep referencing 11,000 odd square feet, I calculate 12,120.
It's actually, and again, I'm here tonight representing Alan Maru, who actually did this, he's in Williamson at another mayor, got 11,940 square feet.
Okay. Yeah, I'm just looking at covered roofed area, I mean, simple math, eighty by one thirty-eight, thirty by thirty-six, add those two together, you get 12,120, but it's a semantic. All right, I'm good. Anyone else?
So Greg, you know, I'm going to ask about stromata, because we're going from a field to a pervious surface, so.
Yep, it's, my understanding, and again, I can fail verify, is the intent was to keep the disturbance under an acre, but as I, as I heard you discuss earlier with the town, for quarter 25, exceeding 25,000 square feet, it would require a slip, erosion control measures and so forth, and Greg, we'll certainly prepare that document as his job in support.
Yeah, and you'll, yeah, a stromata pond or something in order to, you know, mitigate the additional runoff, so.
We'll, we'll have to take a look whether it's a rain garden or something, or something sort of.
Right, right. And then, do we know what the building is going to be made of, or is it just, you know, like?
I can speak, the building is going to be metal.
Metal?
Yeah.
Translocated?
Yes.
Metal structure?
So the trusses are wood, the posts are wood, but everything else is metal, inside and out, roof, sides.
See, it'd be sort of nice to have some architectural rendering of what it would look like, because.
Well, I kind of gave you one there, that was done, not right, you're right, but the loading dock will be four feet in up, and then there'll be a settle roof onto the other roof.
I'm just, I'm afraid how plain it's going to look, and you're coming into the village from, you know, Phillips Road or whatever, and you're entering the village, I think we, maybe we want something that's more appealing than a metal-framed, you know, seam building, but again, that's just my opinion on that, so, and then you're going to have any signage for the?
No, we need any signage.
Okay. Is this just strictly for a backup for the main building, or is this like, people are going to come here, customers are going to come here and all that stuff?
We're going to run our wholesale business out of there, so there will be people picking product up there, yes. The problem is, we're under the gun, because our trucking companies are mandating we have loading docks, and we don't have a loading dock. So right now, we're on a contract with them, they're charging us $1,000 a drop, until we have a loading dock. We tried to put it in next to the, next to the florist, and it just, it just didn't work, it was too tight. Then we were going to go down between Masonic Temple and my mother's house, and there was too many utilities in there, and the trucks won't back in off the road, they want to drive in and drive out. So that piece of property wasn't working either, so that's why we looked at the property across the street, which allows the tractor trailers to pull in, make their loop, back up and pull out.
So are these like full-size tractor trailers?
Yeah.
So I'd be curious on a turning temple.
It's 90 feet.
Yeah, I guess.
Yes, we use, we put, we put turning temples on there, we just show the radius, but that's, that was the, the turning radius for a tractor trailer, is 45 feet.
So is there offices in this building? I mean, like, is it really just drop off the flowers and it's kind of stored there?
Well, they were going to use it for other storage of our product that we need for our events and our weddings, and, you know, we're just kind of busting out the seams where we are now, and we really don't have any room to head out where we are, so this will be an extension. We'll run our deliveries out of there in the holidays.
I'm just curious about, you know, is the number of parking spots enough, or if you have, you know, people working there, and then people picking up stuff, and, you know?
Well, there may be one or two employees in there, that's it.
Because there's no parking calculations on here, as far as what the code requires, and, I mean, we know what's proposed, but does that need it?
So you said wholesale business?
We run our wholesale floral wholesale business out, we will run it out of there, instead of where it is now, at Kilburgers.
Are there going to be any ADA requirements?
Well, yeah.
Right, you're going to have, you're going to have a handicap parking space, you're going to have to have ADA rampage.
We have one split space shown, there is, where is one handicap space provided? That's all that's required by code.
Okay.
It looks like there's an encroachment from the adjacent house that's on this property?
Yeah, driveway that encroaches. But it is basically the same family. Yeah, it's my house. Yeah.
So I'm just worried about when we decide to sell this, or sell the house, and then...
Doesn't have to cut the driveway off and...
The encroachment is in the 60-foot.
In the record, if you state your name and address.
Chair Phil Horr. Mailing address is 263 North Avenue, my residence is 15 Orchard.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Bill? Larry?
What's the, what's the name of the, is it Panama Road?
Yeah, it's Panama.
Yeah, Panama's, uh...
Is that the road into the senior center?
Yeah.
Okay, because I, I wish there was someone to put a sign up there, but...
It's a private road. Well, the seat, the seat, if you're talking about the town reformation center, that's on Toyota Drive.
Right.
This Panama goes into Toyota, but it's a private drive that Zerox owns, so you can't just put up a sign, Zerox wants to put up a sign in Canada, why wouldn't they do that?
What kind of sign are you talking about?
Telling people where the senior center is.
Oh, oh, oh.
There is a sign out there now, it says, what's the recreation center?
The senior, I had, I had trouble exact, placing exactly where this warehouse was going to be, and I was looking for Panama Road, couldn't find it, so I saw.
This is right across the street from the Masonic Temple.
I saw it was the road, you know, the road into the, into the senior center. Oh, the Orchard Street.
I also had our, our village zoning meeting sign out there.
Right.
Our sign is out there as well.
Right.
Saying there's a meeting.
The property is right across the street from the Masonic Temple, on Orchard Street.
Actually, I didn't pick it up there. Still there.
One question that I just didn't quite understand, on page two of our contact information et cetera, number six, has any site plan subdivision approval affecting this property been previously granted? It says yes. So what is that? And what does that include?
I don't know, I went by the title, because we never applied for anything in this piece of property. I, yeah, I can't answer that, I don't know why that's checked yes, it's, there is, this is not, this is an existing lot, and we're not proposing to change its boundaries at all.
Well, was it one big lot, and they subdivided it to build the house?
Originally, yeah, originally, we did, we did subdivide it to build the house.
See, that's, that's probably what we're now advocating.
Yeah, so, yeah, only that, a number of years ago, and certainly it was probably part of a larger piece, and it has been divided over, over the years, but not specific to this application.
If you go back far enough, it was part of the farm.
Yeah, it was part of the farm, you're right.
Okay, anyone else? Questions?
You know, you asked about parking, and I think, you know, the code at 17553 parking requirements, industrial warehousing or manufacturing is established one for each 500 square feet of gross floor area. So if you've got 12,000 square feet, that's 24 spaces, and you've got just a couple.
Right.
So that would require a variance.
Well, we could also put parking in on the, on the east side of the building, all along in front of the building if you wanted.
Well, that's up to you, but we're just going off the plan there as submitted.
Yeah, I, you know, personally, it wouldn't make, to construct parking for the sake of parking doesn't make much sense, it just increases impervious area, if the intent of this is to function as a warehouse, and they're going to have two employees, and most of the, the deliveries are coming by truck, and the wholesale is going out typically by truck or van, it's, there aren't going to be customers coming into this facility.
Well, I kind of agree with that, but the problem is, is let's say, hopefully it's a long time, 40 years down the road, it's sold, if we, if we need to have a site plan that maybe has land bank parking in there, I agree, if he only needs, you know, six or whatever is eight, eight spots, you know, but we need to show a plan that has, all right, we can put parking here, we can do this, we can do that, just as, you know, the next person that comes in and says, well, there's your approved plan, that we can automatically put the...
I understand.
So again, that's going to change.
Or you can apply for a variance from this board to the parking requirements, but...
Well, I think we're trying to change, but that's a... They're drawing to a similar obligation. And we, you know, we can certainly add parking, I, I don't know specifically, does the village permit bank parking? Does that have an option?
Yeah, I think if you show what it meets code, and you put land bank parking in, I mean, that's whoever's the, if it's the village board that approves the site plan, I would think that would be, you know, easier than applying for variance, I mean, you might get both, but...
Yeah, well, I, I think from the standpoint of also, as you say, in 40 years, there's, you know, somebody that's sold to somebody else who does a different business, and we have the bank parking, they can choose at that time to pave that, pave that area, and the owners don't have to go to that expense right now.
What, what, the village called 17553G, reservation of parking areas, up to 25% of the parking space is required in subsection A, that's the 24, may be landscaped and reserved for future parking upon approval of the zoning board of appeals. So, I don't know what 25% of 24 is, but...
Twenty-three?
Huh?
Six.
It's about six.
So, so that means 24 minus six, you got to show 18 spaces, unless you want to get a variance.
All right, I'll, I'll, I'll have to pick that up, I, I can't answer that question right now.
And then I guess one last question, which is probably semantics, but do we have to do the abandonment of the 60-foot highway for the reservation for future street? I think that would be an encumbrance on...
Up in the corner up here.
If this is future access to this parcel, unless it comes off a private road off Panama?
Right.
But Panama belongs to the Xerox?
Yep. And I don't know if that was, if this was Xerox once before, or...
Well, my grandfather owned all the way down Phillips Road, originally, but he sold the Xerox, yes. This melding is not going to happen, a road off of Panama.
Well, right, that's why, but then he wouldn't want that encumbrance on his property, it's having a future right-of-way easement on there, might try to abandon this, and bring it down from your parcel.
There actually, there is not a filed easement, it's, it was referenced on a filed subdivision plan, so we've run into this before too, where easements are shown on a subplan, but the actual easement never gets filed as a document, so I forget this is, the legal people have to, have to address that, but it, it is on there as referenced on a filed subplan.
So I guess, Don, what would be your opinion on, on that, if it's a, if it's shown on a plan to be, that never was filed?
But this was filed, it was filed in the county courts office.
Right, so, but there is no easement actually filed, the plan was...
Well, you get it, you'd only...
So is it showing intent, therefore it's still there?
Well, it depends, whether it's, you know, if it was going to be a dedicated road, there wouldn't be an easement anyhow, it would be a dedication, there'd be a deed, where the, the village would actually own the land, so because it's on a filed subdivision map, it exists, and either, either you got to, you know, amend that subdivision map, or, you know, you can't, you can't ignore it.
Well, no, so that, I'm just getting your interpretation of...
So I don't know where the, so, I guess, what's the setback from the 60 feet to the back of the building? You don't show there, so, you know, if it meets zoning, if they ever build a road in there, then it's no problem, right? They, they show it, they show it here, right? So it's a 60, but this is 60 feet around here?
This is a 60.
So it's about an 80-foot setback.
Future highway, easy to have. Does that, are we starting that one? For the property?
And so what's, uh, the general industrial, what's the setting? Is that the rear, is that the rear or the front, or the side? I think that's the side.
Yeah.
So, you got to look at those, let me find it. Four.
Yeah.
Hey, Don? And you're, if there is an existing 60-foot wide reservation for future street, would the setback line be from the 60-foot line, or from the property line of the adjacent property? Because obviously now there's an overlap.
Well... What should, what the concern should be is, is the side setback, because that's the side of the building, and in a general industrial zone, you need a 20-foot setback. And it looks like, it looks like the, it's 30 feet from the back of the building, so it wouldn't be an issue.
What I'm talking about?
This is the side.
You measure the setbacks from the building.
Oh, I'm just looking at the setback line that he has drawn on there. Oh, if it's 30 feet from to the back of the building, well, okay.
Yeah, we only need 20.
Where are they?
This is 60. The total distance.
So he, he's got...
30 feet from there, he'd have to have 20.
Well, but he's got a...
But it's 40.
It's a corner lot, so, in a corner lot, where there's this side, this side. Are there two rear ones?
60, that one's there. This whole thing is 90, see, that's 60 at the back, 30 more to get to the building.
Right, so he's showing the side setback, that's 40.
What's the corner? Is it a 40, right?
Well, setback's for the rear, it's a corner lot, so which are the, you know, does this have a side setback? Yeah, I'll give the definition in the definition section.
According to the application, minimum required yard areas. Side yard, 40, what's the setback?
For a side yard, it's 20 feet. The rear setback is 40 feet.
What's the front setback?
Front yard.
Well, the front setback is 40 feet, for a front setback. It doesn't really say, it doesn't define the corner lot, which is the side.
We have a little bit of a person, so... I mean, no matter what they got, our own, you know, what they're putting, they have more than we got, by the way, it is...
Where's the front, is it, is this, where's the entrance on this thing? No, where's the door? Get in. Get in, the people are going to walk in. So this is the front of the building?
The front of the building will be on Orchard Street side. Which is the eighty-foot end of the building.
Well, so, I, I don't think the, the highway reservation is an issue, because I think that's the size, that would be the side yard.
I was just making the recommendation that they abandoned it, so it doesn't cause future headaches, is all I'm saying, right?
Well, you're assuming that both the village and the town wanted it to be abandoned. There, there was a reason.
It's private property.
Well, but there was a reason when the subdivision was approved, that someone wanted to put that in there, I doubt the property owners just voluntarily did it.
Well, I, I believe this goes way back to my grandfather, when they were going to build a hotel there, and there was a group of businessmen in Webster, and I think that's where this, and I didn't even know that existed still, but I believe that's where that was drawn up, that would have been back in the sixties.
Well, I, I would just leave alone, I'd just leave it there.
That's the only thing I can think of that, that right away.
Yeah, that would affect any stuff.
Is there other access to the back parcel behind you?
Well, there will be, we'll have a lane down the east side of the road, where the turnaround is, that's going to be in access, and we also have access off of two-fifteen.
This the side.
Off the two-fifteen?
Off the two-fifteen?
This the rear.
Oh, right.
New brain road.
Okay.
And I, I guess, and I guess I reiterate, it would be nice to have some architectural renderings of this building, because, but the only one you get.
Alright, that was thrown together quickly.
Oh, no, 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 well, that's okay, but you said the side facing Orchard Street's going to be the front, well, that's this side, and it doesn't show any door, the doors are on, on the other side, so where the doors are, that's the front. You can't have a front without a way to get it, that's how it's defined. So, so then that would make, if this is the front that faces Panama, then the rear is a forty-foot setback, which does encroach into that highway reservation.
Alright, so we'll put a door on the front.
Well, okay, that's fine.
Just take over the windows, just one of the windows will become a doorway.
Okay. Alright.
The letters that were sent out, did you get any positive or negative feedback from anybody?
No, we didn't receive anything back from the notifications, because that was.
I did have a couple phone calls, and there was, there was no issues.
I think the only resident is actually the house next to it, right?
My house, my mother lives across the street, and then Sonic Temple, Xerox.
And then the lodge is across the street.
It's not, yeah, that's not a lodge.
Right, so that's not a residence?
They actually, they called me, and then the board had no issues with it.
No issues?
Nope, no issues whatsoever, and then we had another call, they just wanted to know what was going on.
Okay. Any other discussion on the board? Anybody else? Any other thoughts? Questions? Alright. So. Since we are not, Don, is there a public portion to this meeting?
There is no legal requirement to open it to the public, but if you want to do that, you certainly can.
Okay, well, I will open it up for public comment, only because I know Rick always has something to say, and I, I'd like to hear what you're, what you have to say. Do you have words of wisdom?
I have no objection whatsoever to this project, this family's been in Webster as long as I have, which means they've been around forever, and they want to run a very good business, and I think it's wonderful that they're expanding, so I'm in favor of the project.
See, that's why. Okay, well, anyone else? That'll close the public portion, back to the board, anything else? Comments? Nothing? Good? Alright, so, before I, Don, might even ask him for a motion here?
Well, if, if, if the board wants to make a recommendation to the board of trustees, it can, and, you know, it might be help, if you do so, it might be helpful to list the concerns that, that need to get addressed.
So we can certainly attach?
Yes.
The requests for architectural rendering, colors, whatnots?
You know, the, the parking, the, the front of the building, the door, yeah, and the, all that stuff, plus, plus you need a, you gotta comply with the stormwater.
Oh, yeah, alright. And since they included the short-form environmental, should I quickly?
That'll, that, since, since the village board, because the village board is the actual approving agency, the village board will figure it out.
So it's not even.
Yeah, so you want me to deal with it.
Okay. So. I will start entertaining motions now for the various, well, first off, positive or negative recommendations to the village board for approval for the construction of this project with associated commentary to be addressed, architectural rendering, color selection, placement of the front door, if it's going to be, the front of the building is going to be Orchard Street, then show us a rendering with the door on Orchard Street. The parking situation, show future parking expansion, where necessary to meet code requirements. Stormwater issues be addressed.
Did you say a new rendering of the building?
I'm sorry?
Did you say a new rendering of the building?
Yes, architect, proper rendering of the building, you know, door placement on the building, elevation of the loading dock, show how it's supposed to.
Okay, I will make that motion, for positive recommendations of the village board.
Exactly.
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, motion is passed, to make a positive recommendation to the village board for approval for the project with the questions attached to be addressed at that time.
Could I ask, when would this go before the village board?
Uh, next Tuesday.
Well, again, possibly.
We can get that together.
Well, it's up to them, you gotta get, well, stormwater stuff, can you do all this between now and Tuesday?
I, I would, with renderings and everything, I, I don't think so, I think it's.
You know, so the, the next, the next meeting would then be January thirteenth. The village board meets on the second and fourth Thursdays.
Is there a deadline requirement after the village board?
Only if.
You don't mean they can come in?
Only if, only if a public hearing is required, because a public hearing isn't required, so, there's no, there's no notice, there's no notice required.
Yeah.
No, no, so. So it'd be the, it'd be the thirteenth?
Is the rendering just of the building, or of the whole site plan?
Just the building.
Just the building, you know, so you see the color, the color of it, and the materials.
By the time, so we can't do anything, we can't start any, any site work or anything until after January.
If we can't do it next Tuesday, I think the only thing essentially that you would need is the, is the SWIP stuff, the stormwater sewer, because if we get the renderings of the building, if you have those showing, you know.
But you have to, you have to make a decision on what you're doing about the parking, because if, if you're going to ask for a variance, then that requires a public hearing and proper notice back to this board, and this board.
Can Al get back to you tomorrow?
Yes.
I think he needs to have the discussion.
Yes.
On what we need to do, I don't want to.
No, that's fine, and I'll just let you know, and, and the, this board would next meet January twentieth, the third Thursday, if you want a variance, so.
Okay.
The parking, the parking spots can be landscaped, right now? Put them right there, is that correctly?
We can do, we can landscape up to six out of the twenty-four.
And show us future.
We would have to provide paid parking for eighteen.
So we need ten more spots.
Ten, eighteen cars, and six additional could be landscaped, and that would be there. And we could do that without a variance.
Yes.
So, yeah, that, but I'll have Al call the village tomorrow, and once he's able to confirm everything about our next Tuesday, so I don't want to rule that out, coming before the town, or the village board.
The other, the other issue with the village board is they've decided to meet remotely, which is cumbersome, especially for something like this, we presume, and I guess I would encourage the board to change its mind. If they're, you know, because they obviously didn't, it was a really short agenda, so meeting by Zoom was not a big deal at the time, but to have them consider this, I think it should be in person, don't you, Carol? Everybody just wear masks.
Right, same thing we're doing tonight.
Would you, would you support that or not?
I'm not going to get into the vaccination stuff and all that.
Well, that's a whole nother issue, you know.
My problem is, time is of the essence, companies have a gun to our head, and there's nothing we can do.
Right, yeah, I just think trying, trying to educate the village board via Zoom as to what you're trying to do is not the best way to go.
I agree.
So I, I would, I would, if, if you can make it next Tuesday, I will strongly urge the mayor to change his mind, and make it a regular in-person meeting, just everybody, just like today, everybody wears a mask.
I have no control over it though, Don, so.
Well, I know, I guess that's up to your engineer architect, or.
No, I'm talking about the in-person meeting.
Well, I know you have no control of it, but to the extent I have any control over it, Carol has any control over it, he's on the board, we'll try to convince the mayor who wanted the Zoom meeting, that let's not do a Zoom meeting, let's do it in person.
I appreciate that.
I have a question regarding, so we add more parking spots, what ramifications would it be for the ground disturbance? Would that be a whole nother problem if we added more spots?
Yes, we would exceed an acre, which then, I mean, puts us within, to, we have to get stormwater permit from the DEC, that's, that's another step in the process, so that involves weekly stormwater inspections during week construction, and it brings some additional requirements in.
Well, there is a big ditch right there that runs along Panama Road, that the village, I think the village owns that.
There's DEC regulations that we have to maintain.
Right, I'm just saying, there's, there's a main ditch that runs down.
I know.
Right, that doesn't necessarily mean that you can dump your water into it, generally speaking, development projects have to contain their water on their site.
You're supposed to, when your water leaves your site, it's supposed to be as if it was today, right now it's a field, so there's probably very little runoff leaving the site, when you add impervious surface, and rain comes, that concentrates everything and makes the water runoff higher, so now there's potential flooding down the road, so the DEC mandates all the municipalities to dictate this, so it's out of our control, we're just, because this plant, to me, is over an acre of disturbance already, there's semantics in the way the disturbance limit is drawn, that you're probably over an acre, so that's already kicks you into an NOI with the DEC, and then that requires stormwater mitigation.
Well, we'll have to, we'll have to look at all those things, and I'll get that from Al, and we'll just shrink the building to, so we do away with the problems.
You could do that.
We go.
But you have, you have this space, you do have the green space to work, potentially to address any SWIP issues, where, you know, maybe you just have to have a small retention bomb behind the building, I mean, there are ways to handle it.
Can I ask a question? If you want quicker approval, could the village give them a tentative go-ahead pending approval of coming back for an easement for the parking? Could that be handled that way?
No, there's no easement for the parking.
Oh, no, if they decide to stay with the smaller parking now, with a variance for that?
We're doing, we're doing a lot of what-ifs, let's talk to Al in the morning, we're gonna.
Agreed.
We can what-if this to death, I'm not even serious, you know what I mean?
Right.
And that's how we're going right now.
Yep.
Let us give a discussion with the owners?
Yes.
And then talk to.
Because if there's some adjustments that, like he already said, could be made, and it's, it's easy enough, or if you or Al say, no, we can do this little minor thing to keep what's there, and you just need to do a little form of DEC, or this and that, I'm just saying, let's just do it, do it right, so it doesn't, you know, come back to bite you later on.
I agree.
Just so you understand, the takeaway tonight is, there is no violent opposition to this development.
I appreciate that.
It's just details, that one's always in the details, so take care of the details and the project.
I appreciate your time.
Yeah, and the, and like Mike said, the stormwater stuff is largely out of the village hands, as Al dictated by the state in York.
That's why we shrink it, we shrink it a little bit to get under these numbers, and.
Well, that's up to you, whatever.
That's totally up to you, but then I'm just going to be happy in the end, is my concern as well.
Because you do have plenty of room to take care of the stormwater, because the, you know, the, the parcel of the land is big enough.
I know you're in a rush, but I mean, unfortunately.
You know, you don't want, you don't want to put yourself, you know, five, ten years from now wishing, I wish I, we would have gone to the twelve thousand square foot building instead of reducing it.
Right.
I understand. So, give me a call tomorrow, I'll call Al, talk to him, if he needs me to meet you down there, I'll meet you down there.
I appreciate that.
Yep. Here's who needs to meet in Al's office. I got time tomorrow.
And if you can get everything together by Tuesday, you know, the village board will, the village board will do its best to accommodate it.
Right, I'm gonna, I'm gonna push for that.
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you, Neil. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
If there is nothing else to discuss, Joe, any training opportunities popping up? I know we're still in pandemic mode, so.
Yeah, there's almost the works online, with some information, I haven't got many yet, but usually it's from our time frame, but we should.
So I would encourage the board members, keep up your training, I know I'm lax, I'm a little behind, but keep up your training to meet for your requirements, and your motions, Jen?
What about, what about next month?
Unless they come back for a variance right now, there's no other applications, I think still, unless Aaron gets anything else coming up.
Okay, so pending application or, or variance required, or anything, you have nothing else?
We have nothing coming up.
Alright, so tentatively, our next meeting would be January twentieth though?
I think that's the third Thursday, yes.
Yes, alright, if there's something in front of the board, if not, then. If there's something in front of the board, if not, then we'll get the emails and then we'll collectively decide if we need to meet or not. So I heard a motion to close the meeting.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting is adjourned.
Everybody have a merry Christmas.
Yes, Merry Christmas.